And the CBICC to get together and support the effort for Save Our Spikes. I think it's clearly a, when you talk about the marriage of economic development and tourism, I think this is a great example of that. We are very lucky to have this baseball team here in the community. It brings, I think, a lot of joy to a lot of people. What a better, what a better way for a family to go out and enjoy the great American pastime of baseball, have a hot dog, a beverage in the summer night. It's a great thing for businesses that are looking to come here, to stay here, to grow here, to see that there's a baseball team here that's thriving and doing well. The last thing we certainly want to see is headlines in the paper that we lost our baseball team. That doesn't say anything good for the economy, and we know we have a great economy here. So the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau and the CBICC have joined to support hashtag #SaveOurSpikes. And I wanted to share with you this evening the 2019 impact report. It shares a little bit of data, some numbers to look at how the Spikes baseball team impacts the community from an economic standpoint, not only from employment, the people that employs, the events that are at the park and how many people come in for those events, the payroll taxes and state and local taxes that are paid, the hotel nights that are generated, but also to think about the indirect effect, the indirect economic impact that the, that the baseball team has. You think about all the people that come into town or go to the baseball stadium to watch the game, they're stopping at gas stations or stopping to get a donut or a cup of coffee or, you know, stopping at local businesses to patronize them and buy things at them on their way to the baseball game or on their way home. That's, that's huge, and it's important to a lot of businesses in our community. So I just wanted to point out this, some of these numbers to you, and also, I think, even more importantly, the contribution that Spikes make to our community as far as community programs and promotions and the good that they do in the community is so important and monumental. I think we've all been to the Spikes games and seen really great things, whether it's Bargain the Park or whether they're participating in blood drives or activities that they participate in the community and how they give back. So we're here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the campaign. We're here tonight to ask the community to support the Spikes and come out this summer, buy tickets, go to the games, bring your families out, and we're here to ask the board to support the Spikes, Save Our Spikes campaign financially. So with that, I'll hand it over to the famous guy in the white jacket, Scott Walker.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm very fortunate to have some very good staff members that, when I asked them to make this jacket, they didn't blink an eyelash and said, okay, we'll do it, as ridiculous as it is. But I appreciate the time tonight, I really do. We're very fortunate to have a wonderful community here in Happy Valley. I'm fortunate to be a part of it. I love all of Center County. I love every community and township and borough across Center County, and I would hate to see us lose our baseball team. The Save Our Spikes initiative is a pretty robust campaign. It includes a lot of local marketing, such as catibus wraps that you'll see cruising around town soon, a lot of digital billboards, print ads in the CDT, radio spots, TV spots, digital and social media marketing. What we're trying to do is educate the entire community on how they can help. I think when the news first came out, folks wanted to help but weren't sure how to do that. There was a petition started on change.org that saw over 1,000 folks sign it almost immediately, and we're very appreciative of that. But really what we need is tangible results. And if you go to savearspikes.com, there are key ways that you can get involved, and it outlines everything there. So the situation as it currently stands is that there may not be all of the 42 teams on the list eliminated, and that's, that's encouraging. I think there's reasons for optimism, but we need to be as appealing of a community as we can possibly be so that when it comes down to it, Major League Baseball may or may not be making decisions on which communities are going to have an affiliated minor league baseball team, that there's no way they can look at Happy Valley and Center County and say, that community did not respond and that community does not care about their minor league club. And an affiliation agreement with a Major League Baseball team economically is everything for us. There's been studies done on independent league teams that they're just not financially viable. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but it's something to the tune of 80% of all independent baseball teams that have ever been in existence fail within four to five years. And I have no doubt, knowing the insides, the ins and outs of the operation, that we would most likely be in that same boat. Major league teams pay the players' salaries. If you've seen recently, they've voted to increase player salaries starting in 2021, and we totally encourage that. That's, that's a good thing. We want the players to be making more money. We're fortunate to have a community that supports the players in terms of housing, food, transportation. 100% of our players in this town stay for free with local families, and that's a testament to how much our community cares about baseball, about the Spikes, and what we mean to the community. We've been fortunate to give back over $5 million in the history of the franchise. This is year 15, so over $5 million in 14 seasons prior, $500,000 alone last year. We host numerous, numerous community events, charitable functions, 5Ks and so forth, coaches versus cancer events, American Heart Association walks, the list goes on and on. We're very fortunate to have the support of the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau and the CBICC. Without them, honestly, we would not have this campaign be what it is. We're also very fortunate to have some other folks get involved. College Township and the State College Borough have joined the campaign. And what we need is financial support, quite frankly. At the end of the day, we're not sure exactly what it is going to take to survive. There may be some substantial needs to the ballpark. The ballpark is beautiful, it's wonderful, but there may be some player experience amenities that we don't have in place now that may need to be retrofitted or added to the ballpark. Penn State is very involved. We have a great partnership with Penn State University, and they're certainly involved. But we're not sure exactly. I don't have a magic formula or I don't have an X, Y, and Z here today on what it's going to take. And this process could play out the entire calendar year. Back in 1990, when the last PBA was contentious between major and minor league baseball, it came down to the 11th hour at the baseball winter meetings in December. And fortunately, they did make an arrangement that continued on with minor league baseball as it was at that point. So whatever we can do as a community, we're asking everybody to do it. Not everybody can do the same things. We need to continue contacting elected officials to have them continue voicing their support in Congress and at higher levels, at the Senate. We need folks to come out to the ballpark this summer. We need to show them, leave no doubt behind that Happy Valley supports a minor league baseball team in the form of increased attendance for 2020. Show them that the 15th season of Spikes baseball matters to everybody and that this community supports the team from a local government standpoint, from a citizen standpoint, resident standpoint. We need everybody's help. So with that, I thank you very much for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to, you know, do any follow-up meetings or conversations as well with everybody, and we really thank your time and effort tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? I thought so.
I know you don't want to give us a foul tip, but is there anything specific in this inning that you would like us to do or consider to help do this? I mean, we don't want to make a home run without having tried.
Sure. I like your puns. They're very good. Well, you know, a patent township night, I think, would be something that would be great to look at, where we pick a night. That's what College Township is doing, in addition to some other ways that they're helping out financially as well. So we would, we would love some support in that regard. The advertising we do have out in the community is not cheap. The catibus is pretty substantial, and we need to keep being at the forefront and have our awareness be as high as it can be so that folks don't forget about it. Folks have a short-term memory these days, so we need to stay out in the news even now, even in February, although it's 55 degrees and feel like you could play baseball, which is nuts, but, so yeah, financial support, whatever we can do. I'm not going to, I'm not going to throw out any specific numbers, but we may need every reserve we can possibly have when it comes down to potentially meeting any new facility requirements that may be required in a new agreement with Major League Baseball.
So I'm not sure, so I'm excited about this program and your working with other townships. I'd like more information on the other ways, what different townships have contributed, what Borough has done. I love the idea of the township night. I would try my best to go there.
I'd be great.
But I feel like for us to make a specific offer, we would maybe know a little bit more, need to know a little bit more information of what your needs are, what other communities have, what other municipalities have done.
Sure.
So, does that sound?
Yeah, I can work with Scott and Jennifer and check with College and the Borough and see what they've done and maybe put together a little proposal.
I would also suggest that we pass a supporting resolution.
Oh, that's, of course.
Which would be pretty simple to do, so we can do that at our next board meeting for discussion.
That's great.
Do we need a motion to have that drafted?
I think we can just, I think he's already taken.
I don't think we need a motion. Doug is just going to.
Let's just put something together for him.
Put something together for us.
But I'd also like all of us, and maybe even staff too, to kind of think outside the box if, I'm trying to think of a pun. Hit one out of the ballpark.
Pull something out of left field. You can do it.
Yeah.
What's your pitch?
My pitch is, I'm going to leave you in the batter's box. Okay. I'm thinking, asking organizations around town that already have a, say, digital board, like Kish Bank, if we can't get others to show some support leading up to that night. Yeah, it's kind of a community effort.
It's all part of it.
Another suggestion, we have a business association, Patent Township, Patent Township Business Association. They just met today, although I didn't attend, but that's, I would think a representation to that association would be beneficial to you. They meet the fourth Wednesday at noon of every month.
And the, yeah, you can find it on the web. The person you want to talk to is Dave Panko.
Yes, David Panko.
Yeah, David Panko.
So this is February, but we could maybe come to March.
Right, yeah, get, get in touch with him. He'll put you on the agenda where he can, I'm sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Another thing, Doug, I wanted to ask for a refresher on our Economic Development Fund.
We'll, we'll give you an update on that.
Give us an update. So it's potential, but potentially we could tap into that fund to offer a contribution.
Couldn't tell you at this point. We'll bring that information back in a couple of weeks.
And another thought, we have a, I'm forgetting the name of the fair, the safety?
Safety Fair.
Safety Fair. But it might be possible for you to get some connection with that, have a booth there. I think the community would like it.
We would love to.
And Dave Panko is the one who runs that also, so it'd be a double hitter.
You guys are great. Thank you very much.
What about our COT meeting? Or can they participate in our COT, which has all our?
Our January 4 meeting is the fourth Monday night of every month.
Yeah, we're not saying no to anything at this point.
Yeah, we just had one this week, but.
Is all our municipalities are joint there, so if you could do a presentation to all of that, that's a major step.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the Children's Fair, who should we contact in your organization?
Me, I can leave you in my car.
Okay, if you give it Chief Jolly there, he'll pass it on to Officer, Officer Tuskovich will be in charge, in touch with you.
Any more comments? Any comments from the peanut gallery? I'm working this one.
She's on fire.
I'm sitting next to the master. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate it.
We'll try to help you not strike out.
Okay. Ah, so that brings us to our second of the public here, public presentations, the Council of Government Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory, and that would be Ms. Pam Adams, famous Pamela Adams. Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Pam Adams. I'm the Sustainability Planner at the Center Region Planning Agency with COG, and tonight I want to share with you why we're working on climate action and adaptation planning, provide you with the final results of our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and then also discuss targets and the recommendations and get your feedback. So first, why we're looking at this is because it's starting to be felt locally. In Pennsylvania, we're seeing a 71% increase in extreme rain, rain events, and those are when rains more than two inches at one time. And that rain is causing damage to the infrastructure, which costs money. PennDOT has been spending a lot, and locally you might have felt also in your municipality, as well as it's disruptive to homeowners, businesses when there's flooding, and agriculture. Another area that we're seeing it is with public health. When we have increased rain and above-average temperatures, we are seeing Lyme disease rates increase. The chart on the left shows Pennsylvania in the last 10 years has almost tripled the Lyme's disease cases, and the orange-red line above that is here in Center County, and we're 100 points higher than what we're seeing in the state. And then as far as mosquito-borne illnesses, the West Nile Disease Virus, we had 17 cases in, 20 cases in 2017, and in 2018 it's 130. We're waiting to get more information for 2019 rates, but we're starting to feel the effects for, with public health. The chart on the left shows with those extreme weather events, we're getting more power outages. Between 2004 and 2012, those outages doubled. And then on the right, the chart shows that we are seeing an increase in temperature. Pennsylvania has increased its temperature 1.8 degrees Fahrenheit in the last century, and then the projection based on what we've been seeing is that Pennsylvania is going to warm another 5.4 degrees. So that has an effect on our ecosystems, on our rain events, and that is why the elected officials have given CRPA the, the objective of identifying pragmatic and fiscally responsible actions so that you can consider how to mitigate your greenhouse gas emissions as well as anticipate and adapt to the changing climate. This shows the seven steps that we're going to be looking at to be able to identify actions and then implement them as far as climate action and adaptation. Step one, the emissions inventory is complete, and I'm going to share those results with you next. The second step is what we're heading into next is establishing the targets. The second quarter, I'll be working with a team of people on a vulnerability assessment and prioritizing for the region where we're most vulnerable. And then for the third and fourth quarter, we'll be working on developing an action plan. If you recall, there's a technical advisory group that's working on researching best practices. We're planning community engagement, stakeholder, we need a lot of input to make a meaningful regional community plan. So before I share the numbers with you, I just want to explain why we do an inventory and what it is. Basically, if you don't measure, you can't reduce. So it's important to do an inventory so we can determine where our large sources of emissions are and also track progress. As far as what is included in the inventory, we basically follow, follow the accounting principles, they're called protocols, for what should be in the inventory. And we look at electricity use, the other sense of energy and fuel use for homes and heating, such as natural gas and fuel oil. We look at vehicle travel, because that's another fuel source, that's the mobile fuel source, as well as looking at water and wastewater treatment, the generation of solid waste, and then for our inventory, we're also looking at agriculture as far as animal management and fertilizer use, because that's relative when we look at our region. The reason that these are selected is because local governments have an influence on this, and we can make a difference. The data is available, and it's generally common throughout the nation, as well as it's common to be able to collect the information and be able to compare things. So for the Center Region, this is for our community, it does not include Penn State. Penn State has their own inventory and action plan, but for our Center Region community, for 2016 is the year that we looked at, we have 815,107 metric tons carbon dioxide equivalent. That carbon dioxide equivalent includes three gases, which is carbon dioxide, methane, methane, and nitrous oxide. So when you look at our region, 35% of those emissions are from residential energy, 33% from commercial energy, 20% from transportation and mobile, and mobile sources, and then the remaining is solid waste, agriculture, and water and wastewater. So we got information from West Penn Power, Columbia Gas, PennDOT, so there's methods that we use to get this information, and we can go into residential energy and look at how much electricity. So we have more detail, but for tonight's presentation, I'm showing you this. There is a report that's going to come to Public Services and is in the draft mode, but will ultimately go to public, to the general forum that provides all the detail. So what does 815,000 metric tons mean, and what does it look like? Basically, driving a car 2 billion miles in a year is one way to look at it. It's almost a quarter of a coal-fired power plant, or if you wanted to sequester all that carbon, you would need to plant a million acres of forest, and that's about 11 school districts or Rothrock Forest. To look at this number another way, it's also good, since we have some historical numbers, to look at how it compares to in the past. In 2011, Penn State presented COG with an inventory that they did from 2006. So I was able to get that raw data and plug it into the software using 2006 data, but so that we're trying to compare as much as we can apples to apples. And that data was 10 years, so we, we look at 10 years, we have an increase in emissions. We have an increase in population, so it's, it's not surprising, because not a lot of actions have been happening. But I will point out, the blue, which is residential energy, decreased. All the other ones increased, so that, that is one thing to point out. And that 2010, I extrapolated that number because when people, communities are setting targets, they tend to use 2010 as a baseline, and a lot of things refer in climate science to 2010. So since we have the two, two years of data, extrapolating 2010 seemed to be a reasonable As I mentioned, our emissions increased, but we also know our population increased. So if you want to look at it per capita, we actually decreased, we were at 11 metric tons per person, that's the carbon footprint in 2006, and in 2016, we're down to 10.18 metric tons per person. So there are things that are happening, but if you recall, it's mostly due to that residential energy decreasing. Residential energy use decreased, electricity decreased by 20%. So just keep note of that. But that is one thing. Then I also include on this slide, if we do nothing compared to 2016 and our population grows, which we have a forecast with the comprehensive plan and stuff as to what we expect population to be, we're going to emit over 900,000 metric tons. So that's just to explain, like, if we don't do anything, emissions could continue to increase. Which brings us to talking about targets. Basically, we're looking for the elected officials to set a target to sort of give us where we want to be in the future, and then working with the technical advisory group, the community, stakeholders, the municipalities, we'll come up with a plan of action on how we're going to get there. I've listed here what Pennsylvania goals are, and then also that Ferguson Harris and the Borough have passed resolutions on reducing their emissions. Targets will spur action and send a message. The technical advisory group is recommending we use the most recent climate science, and in your agenda, there is attachments there about some of the reports from the IPCC, and we're recommending a 45% reduction in our emissions by 2030 based on 2010 levels, an 80% reduction by 2050, and then with that remaining amount, we want to offset that to be carbon neutral in 2050. This is a graph of how it would look visually, so it is, the first three are actual numbers of what our inventories have been, and in 2030, you could see sort of behind there what we could be if we don't do anything. And then there is, if we want to meet our goal, we need to bring our emissions down to 443 metrics tons, based on the 2010 number. And most of the times, when we talk about targets, people want to know how we're going to get there. And I'm going to give you some examples, but I also want to point out that we're looking for that target to sort of kick off the process so that we can create the action plan. My hope is that by the end of the year, I'm coming back to you with concrete actions that are, been vetted by the community and the public, and then we can select from a menu of them what works for Patent Township. But some things that are happening in other communities that can be given as an example, I've listed up here. If you recall from that inventory, over 65% of our emissions are from energy use, and so it's going to be imperative that we look at energy reductions. As I mentioned, in the 10 years, residential has decreased their electricity use by 20%. With some activities, such as trying to promote home audits, maybe even certifying, if you want to say, some companies that can be auditors, without any expense to us other than education programming, I believe we can get another 20% out of residential homeowners in reduction. On the commercial program side, we have a lot of opportunities there, and I'll point out, when you reduce your energy, you're reducing your cost. So we have a disconnect between tenants and property owners. So that's something that I don't have the exact answer for, but Rochester, different places are doing different programs. CPACE is a low-cost, long-term financing program for energy and water-saving programs, and Center County is currently looking at that, is being able to offer it, which would really help us, to be able to talk to businesses about if they have energy reduction programs or projects they want to do, they can get these funds that tie to their property, not to them. It's been successful in many places. So that, that's one thing that will help them be able to start these projects, and then they realize the savings. Benchmarking is something that's becoming popular, and Energy Star runs a portfolio manager that you can do benchmarking, and Philadelphia has, you could do voluntary education programs, and Philadelphia has an ordinance for certain-sized businesses, and they've seen a 12% reduction in greenhouse emissions for those companies that have, are participating. And then lastly, there's District 2030, which is a large program in Pittsburgh, and basically they've gotten 540 properties to commit to a 50% reduction by 2030. So that District 2030 is a national program organization that goes in and tries to help spur businesses who want to commit and be part of the program. So those are some of the things, and then I listed, the UAJ has solar arrays that they're about to get in their second phase, and they're, we're talking about a solar power purchase agreement for local entities, and those two things alone, if we do that, would reduce our emissions by 3%. So they're not huge, but it'd be a good leadership role for local government to show. I will say that a lot of things that the state and federal government does could help, and I listed some things that Pennsylvania currently has. Right now, there are alternative energy portfolio standards that Pennsylvania has, and they want it to be 18% by 2021. They should be looking at that and making it a higher number. That will help us a lot, because we can use the electricity from our power plant, and that power plant starts using more renewable energy, that helps our emission, our emissions go down, as well as, Pennsylvania's looking at joining the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which is looking at the power companies and putting sort of a cap and invest program together, which would also spur our power plants to use more, less fossil-based fuel. which would also spur our power plants to use more, less fossil-based fuel. Obviously, it's not just energy, but there's transportation, and Pennsylvania is also looking at the Transportation and Climate Initiative, which is the same kind of cap and invest program that would be used for the fueling of transportation. And we, as local government, can look at smarter city designs, a lot of this stuff we already are doing. We want to increase our electrical vehicle infrastructure, we can't make people buy electric vehicles, but we want to be able to have that infrastructure. And we can look at greening our municipal fleets. So those are some of the examples, but I do believe with local municipal actions in some state and federal, we can get to that forty-five percent, and actually, from my calculations, I'm at forty-seven percent that we can meet that goal. I will say, what I'm starting to hear from College Township for my other meetings I've gone to, is that I'm planning to put a piece of paper together that will sort of show these numbers on where mine, how I'm getting to a forty-seven percent reduction, so you could feel a little bit more comfortable with that target, but I think it can be reached. And at, this is my last slide, just sort of the timeline, and I will say that it's been adjusted a little bit based on some of my other municipal meetings. Basically, the plan is that I'm looking for feedback. At March Public Services Committee, I'm going to present them with a draft resolution so that in March and April, you guys can discuss that, and then I'm hoping at the April Public Services meeting, you pass, you forward the resolution to the general forum so that we pass a resolution for the emission reduction target in April, up on this calendar that says March. That doesn't change the end timeline, it just gives you more time to talk about it and discuss it. And that is it. If there are any other questions? And I will also just point out here that we're planning to get community feedback, community involved, but at the end of the day, we'll have a set of different actions and get your input on, so that we can reduce our emissions.
Pretty amazing. So I know we have members of the audience who want to add, but I think we'll take comments from the board, if there are any, and then don't let us forget about the audience, I know you won't.
You meant, which year is our first target, is it 2030?
Twenty thirty, yes.
Okay. As you know, in 2020, a whole new set of climate data will be assembled because it's done every ten years, so that 2010 will only be a benchmark until the 2020 comes out.
Yeah, but a lot of places are using 2010 as their, their comparison to what you're trying to reduce to.
I know, but that's always the case.
Yep.
And, and I believe as long as the calendar continues to run and they don't change the period, the 2020 data will be important, and it's probably going to show the same trends.
Correct, correct. Yes.
The only minor project that I can think of specifically is, I think there are a lot of emissions that come from idling automobiles and trucks, and part of it is because of inefficient traffic signals.
Right.
And maybe an investment in changing that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
In fact, we have an adaptive traffic signal on the, on the calendar, what timeline.
Yeah, we're, we're always working to upgrade. I mean, we have on Waddle Road, we have the highest level, but we can actually tweak that some more, and then at Valley Vista, we'll get something that's not quite adaptive, but should help.
Yeah, and to that point, I just want to add, when I mentioned residential energy decreased twenty percent, municipal lighting, which is the streetlights and the stoplights reduced by fifty, over fifty percent, so the municipalities, kudos to you because your upgrading of the streetlights, I mean, you're always, as Doug says, doing things to continue to stay in the forefront, but the electricity usage shows, when you look at the numbers from West Penn Power, how much it's decreased from the municipal lighting and stoplight changes.
The recommendations, these target recommendations, where did they originate from?
So the forty-five percent? So it's from IPCC, which is the International Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which is a forum of scientists from around the world, and if you look on the back page of what I handed out to you, that first paragraph talks about if we want to get, if we want to be able to be close to the one point five percent, that forty-five percent from 2010 by 2030 is what they're recommending.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
Anyone else here? We'll take question, comments from the audience, and thank you for coming to show yours, which I assume is going to be your support. Jump the gun there.
Hello, it's nice to be with you again. My name is Sylvia Neely, and I live at 109 Oak Point Circle. I volunteer with the State College Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. Our nonpartisan organization has almost six hundred chapters around the world, and we focus on one thing, putting a price on carbon as the first step towards solving the climate change problem, and giving all the funds that are raised that way to each household in the United States in equal shares every month. The plan is embodied in a bill now in Congress called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, HR 763, which would put a steadily rising price on the carbon content of fossil fuels as they are produced. And I am immensely grateful to the Patton Township Board of Supervisors for endorsing this bill, almost exactly one year ago, in February of 2019, in which you made a special petition to Congress asking them to pass this legislation, because this is going to make your job a whole lot easier if this passes. This plan is good for people, it helps to create jobs, the dividend protects people from rising prices as we make the transition to renewable energy. This plan does not grow government, does not depend on regulation, and relies on the price mechanism to shape choices by businesses and consumers. Climate change is a large problem, and I believe it has to be tackled from different directions. So while you helped our organization by supporting our work at the national level, there is much that can be done at the state and local level to smooth the transition to renewable energy. The economic proposition is pretty straightforward, as Pam has just showed here, the cost of doing nothing and allowing climate disruption to go unchecked will lead to enormous costs in increasing storms, extreme weather, struggling agriculture, infrastructure repair, economic dislocation, uprooting of people from areas prone to flooding, increasing pests and diseases, higher costs of insurance, and much more. The proposal before you tonight is a positive step in the right direction. Acting together in our region, we can make a difference in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Your work in this township will be easier, as I said, if we get Congress to put a price on carbon, but your example here also will help persuade Congress to do just that, and to show that there's widespread support for climate action. So I promise you that we'll keep lobbying Congress, and I hope that we can continue to work together to move us towards the new energy economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts and your encouraging words.
My name's Doug Mason, I'm Chair of the Sierra Club Nellie Shannon Group. I'm also a resident of Patton Township and live a mile or so from here on Gainer Road near Bray's Woods. I, as the Sierra Club, of course, applauds the efforts by COG to develop this greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and I urge the supervisors to support the reduction targets as outlined this evening by Pam Adams. It is essential that our municipality get behind this effort to establish emissions reduction targets, identify tangible actions aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and measure progress towards achieving those targets. The Sierra Club's Ready for 100 campaign is committed to moving our nation toward a future powered by renewable energy sources with zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. And it's in agreement with the Center of Region Climate Action and Adaptation Technology Technical Advisory Group's recommendations to move the COG region to carbon neutrality by 2050. Tonight, we have an opportunity for Patton Township to think locally and act locally, and provide local leadership for the rest of our state, country, and planet to emulate if we're aware that the storms of climate change threaten our civilization, in my opinion. So please support COG's resolution when it comes up later this spring, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Ernest.
Ernest, come on up to the, come on up to the podium.
I didn't use the mic.
So the whole world can hear you.
I have nothing really formal to say, but I'm, I've worked with Ernest.
Give it, yes, give us your name and your address.
My name is Ernest Boyd, I live at 17 Coventry Lane, over here in Patton Township. I just wanted to reiterate what they were saying, it really disturbs me, and I'm sure it disturbs many of you, that there are so many people denying climate change, so many people that deny science. A lot of these are, of course, the people who are making money in the fossil fuel industry, making exorbitant, you know, yeah, profits off, off of ruining our planet, but there also must be a lot of ignorance out there. And we expect, and we know that our elected leaders will not be ignorant about this, and so we hope that you will consider, as you mentioned earlier, sustainability. Think of that first, think, think of the environment first before just development. Lorax, and we stand for the trees, and where I lived, I watched last year, thousands and thousands of trees cut, put up a housing for students, and I wondered, isn't there some farmlands somewhere where they could have put all, put these houses instead of cutting down all the trees? So I just encourage you, think about the environment, and think about the people in the environment and sustainability first.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I can, while our next speaker is coming up, I can certainly speak for myself that I do put the environment first and foremost, but I, I also say that we are a country of laws, and there are some laws that are out there that are not necessarily, well, they were there and trees get cut down, let's put it that way. So since I didn't have a billion, five million dollars to buy Patton Crossing, or twenty million dollars, they get cut down, so it, it does happen, as there are tough choices. Thank you.
Anita T., 761 Cornwall Road in Park Forest Village. I have a question for our excellent speaker that deals with both the need for public attitude change and parallel planning. Because I'm friends with some local folks who moved here from Denmark, I've been aware of news from Denmark, and as you probably noted, back in the fall, The Washington Post ran an article about Copenhagen setting a goal of carbon neutral by 2025, and that article said that that would require seventy-five percent of their population to use transit that is either by foot, by bike, or by public transit. And if, I'm just wondering, and I know this is getting ahead of the game here, but in terms of implementing car matters, if you're expecting additional bikes and bus work, and that would speak to planning at a regional level even more for buses, we've got such an excellent CADA now, but if you could speak to both the need for helping the public in an information and a persuasion manner, if these are the things that will be required, how does one get the public to buy into that? And I know that's, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but if, will your recommendations include kind of a public information persuasion campaign at the regional level?
Yes, very, very good question, and you are jumping ahead a little bit, but the, for transportation, local government, we have control to make sure that the infrastructure and the ability is there. We can't make people take the bus and make people buy electric vehicles, but public education is going to be very large. There are things that we can do to make parking more difficult, and maybe driving your car more difficult, so I'm not necess, I don't know what those will be, but we definitely want to get people out of their cars with just themselves, and that will be a very big push to be doing that. So that also brings up one more thing, I talked about energy reduction, saving money. Another benefit of these activities is making people more active, and it's a health benefit to them to get out of their car and either ride their bike, or walk, or take the bus in any cases. So, yes, and I do, Denmark has great goals, and they're a good model, but we will start where we are and work forward from there.
Thank you. And I'd like to add that within the, I guess, most recent year, Patton Township added a, an electric vehicle charging station, it's Level One, we can aspire to larger levels, but that, that's a start, and we did that because...
Level Two.
Level Two, it, we had larger, it was, well, it was free for us, so we got a grant from the, from the state, I believe, Doug, and, and there we go. But we need to all be doing that in our sleep, basically. Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Elliot, sir.
One idea might be for Pam, your agency, to have a, a low-energy-using board where people can see our progress, like the United Way has percentages each year, and then here is, here we are, and, and here's where we're heading.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Another thing, though, is I think when we talk about making it harder to park, we're also making it easier for more emissions to occur as people look for parking, and so we should arrange for alternatives that are in place before the parking is removed.
Yep, good points, very good points.
So any, any final guidelines for the Public Services and Environment Committee, which, of which I'm a member, so you, you don't deliver it tonight at this meeting, you can certainly convey it through me. I'm excited to be on that committee, and really enjoy working with Pam.
Good work.
But we were talking about it in March and April, so.
Good work, Pam.
Thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
Thanks.
And thank you to the public who came in support. So I guess that brings us to the Comprehensive Recreation Park and Open Space Plan Review, and that would be Susan Wheeler, is that correct?
Well, I'll start.
Oh, sorry, Doug.
Go ahead, Susan, wander up there. We looked at this briefly last month, or the last meeting in February 12. Parks and Rec has produced, I think, what the final draft of the study, there's a link to that full document there in the agenda. The board had also asked for the Patton Township Recreational Advisory Committee to take a look at the recommendations, or look at the plan, and provide some comments. And with that, I'm going to turn to Susan now, and she can talk about the RAC review and comments that were also included in your agenda materials.
Well, we met last week, the RAC did, and each member of the committee had spent a lot of time going through the document. They also were involved in knowing what was going on through the whole time that the Steering Committee was working while the document was being developed. They had a lot to talk about, and so we tried to get it all together in a summary on the one page that would be useful to the board. They had a, a bit of a fear that the document has so much information in it, it would be hard to kind of settle on something or those issues that would be agreed upon, or could be agreed upon by all the municipalities. And so rather than just making general comments, they wanted to have, pick the fourteen highest issues of greatest concern that were listed in the executive summary that we looked at two weeks ago, and be very specific about those things that they think are of the highest importance to be tackled first within the context of that report. Because as you know, if you read the report, it's a lot of, it's a lot of recommendations, a lot of work, and really meant to be a roadmap that'll be re-investigated and reviewed every probably five years to, to see where they're going. So they did say that they would recommend that, from their opinion, that some of these should be ranked, and they did rank them in order of what they thought were important. And their first and highest ranking was the Division of Maintenance Responsibilities between Parks and Rec and the municipalities, to make sure that there's a document that everyone agrees on in terms of what is done and what Parks and Rec should be doing. that is that there should be a study for an appropriate level of staffing and the governance structure, because they felt that those two items were really intimately connected, because the governance structure, by becoming more efficient and streamlined, is affecting or would affect the level of staffing. And then that also ties to maintenance responsibilities. So those come, came up as kind of the highest issues of concern to them, because they want to make sure that the Parks and Patton Township are going to be maintained well over the years. Their need for alternative funding sources, they added a little bit of extra wording to that that wasn't really in the original document, because I think that the need for alternative funding sources is a very broad, general descriptor, and most people might think that it means grants and things like that. But they felt it was be very important for the Parks and Rec to do an analysis of the cost of all of their programming and maintenance, so that they can come up with a better business structure. And that that would also be key to being able to, be able to determine levels of staffing, but also better able to look after maintenance responsibilities. And then they felt that the trail connections and expansions are of high importance, because they know that that's of high importance to Patton Township residents. In all the surveys that we've done in the last fifteen years, that comes up as high importance, and it's something that we've really been concentrating on, and we wanted to make sure that that was known as something of value to our residents. Then they actually added a fifth, which is, wasn't really one of the recommendations from the report, but they did think that the Parks and Rec should look at the current program offerings and evaluate all of them within the context of whether or not they can be structured to break even or make some money, so that they're self-sufficient, had do an analysis of all of the existing programs to decide which programs really are necessary, and do an analysis to make sure there's not a lot of duplication between all of the rest of the programs that are offered by other agencies and what Parks and Rec offers. Because they thought that that also tied back into the analysis of costs for offering programs and performing a maintenance. So those are what they thought was the most important thing that came out to them. They did think that there were some barriers to completing the plan at any, kind of in any way. And again, there, they thought that the addition, any additional cost to the township and its residents would be a problem. So with any of these kinds of recommendations in the plan that are going to cost the residents additional monies, they were not very comfortable with that, and they think that that's a barrier to the plan. Also, the inability perhaps for municipalities to agree on any one of the, or any of the given recommendations. So there are a lot of given recommendations in there, and they're worried that, some of them will never be implemented, because there's no way that all the municipalities could agree.
Okay.
I don't know that they know that, but that was their comment. They also had some reservations that they want to, well, they want to make sure that in anything that's adopted within the plan, that a barrier would be that probably most municipalities wouldn't really want Central Region Parks and Rec Agency dictating how those amenities are being developed within each township. Because, as you know, each township builds the amenities with their own monies, and they didn't want there to be a mandated relationship between Central Region Parks and Rec and the municipalities giving statement on exactly how the parklands should be developed. And then they just made a general comment, which again, they considered to be a potential barrier, and that is that Patton Township is unique in that it collects point seven mils of taxes, and so we do have a working pot of money that allows the Patton Township residents to benefit from the things that are decided upon by them and through survey and then implemented by township staff and the board. So those, they felt it was important to make very specific comments on the plan. Otherwise, the plan is going to go back to general form, and if all of the boards are saying general things, then it really doesn't help anyone who forward in trying to make things more efficient.
Thank you very much. I just, I have one thing to say, and then, if that's all right. I must say, I was overwhelmed at the enormity of everything. And I'm fascinated, and I say kudos to your group for really focusing on the infrastructure. I actually took it almost a superficial look at it, I think, now that I see what you've done. And I was looking at products I'd like to see in the park, more, more public involvement or more natural areas, without thinking at all really of how we get there. And I think it's really brilliant what your group has done to step back and let's delay the tangible projects, and let's work at the infrastructure that will allow us to get there.
You know, I think that their consideration is that those discussions really occur at the township level, between the RAC and our residents and the board, in terms of deciding on those tangible products. So that's not being delayed, because those are decisions that we're already making. But the other things that are of higher importance to them is making sure that all those decisions and improvements that are being made in the township on an ongoing basis are really being maintained and looked after well at a high level.
And can be implemented.
And, and things like that. So they have less interest, for example, in the regional parks, whichever all municipalities have agreed to fund and be involved with, but the Recreation Advisory Committee's interest is really what the residents want in this township, and so they don't deviate much from that.
Interesting. Well, yeah, kudos. So other comments from the board? Thank you for that, and I apologize for going first, but I have to...
I really appreciate the amount of study that the RAC members, committee members, have put into this humongous document. I start to read it, and my eyes droop, and I start to fall asleep. This will give me a good guideline, you know, the recommendations that the RAC members have provided. So I can now go back and start using these priorities that RAC has given us, in terms of my own evaluations of the different recommendations. And I, I do think that the next time we discuss this before we sit our comments, that we should all have studied this, and so that we can come forward with how, how we're going to prioritize all those recommendations that are included in here, plus the additional comments.
So I sort of did almost what I would call a buckshot approach. I went through all the lists, but I, I did, I felt overwhelmed, and I didn't have any way to really assess, compare. I think this structure that you've recommended will allow me to see it differently when I...
It does, I think, probably allows you to look at it from the perspective of the township's interests. I mean, just based on the fact that the Recreation Advisory Committee is only looking at, based from that viewpoint. Also, bear in mind that they're always been involved with our own survey of our own residents that we do every five years, so they already have a keen sense of the kinds of things that, questions they want answered, the kinds of things that really sit in terms of priority of what they think should happen and things like that. And so that allowed them to really investigate and delve into these items, I think, which are of highest importance to them. Some of the other recommendations in the plan are much more far-reaching and maybe much more general, and, and would be maybe farther down the road, but then that's going to become a conversation at the general forum, where each municipality or each member, pardon me, decides on, on what is of high value, and how do you move forward? But the plan really is meant to be looked at piecemeal, so that as you pick the most important items, that you'll look at that in the near term, and then in the farther term, and then the farther term, and then reassess whether or not some of these issues mean anything. I mean, it's really, the comprehensive park plans that they're put together from municipalities are usually quite robust like this and quite healthy. And the reason for that is because some things may just be thrown out. I mean, there may be some certain percentage of this where nothing is ever considered.
One more thing that was brought up at the last meeting was the confusion of the term "open space." George Downsborough, former supervisor, recommended that the term "open space" be changed in the title of the comprehensive plan, to use a different wording. And I think Jess, I mean, Betsy recommended "open areas," because what the comprehensive plan is addressing are the non-developed areas of existing parks, which is not the same thing as open spaces we understand it, which is where we, we buy property to remain open space in perpetuity with minimal park development, you know, infrastructures.
And it has a different meaning for homeowners who, when a development occurs, and a certain percentage of that has to be open space. So we had a very nuts-and-bolts discussion with one such development, and there's a lot of confusion.
Yeah, so that title was chosen before the steering committee was actually put together. So I think that title was chosen when the grant application was made, which was in advance of the steering committee becoming a group. So there's not really a lot of discussion of changing that title. My discussion always was that you better define it properly, because Patton Township's not going to like it.
Oh, good for you. So are you saying that that title is not negotiable, because it's connected to the grant?
You can still make the comment.
You can still make the comment. I'm not saying it's not negotiable, it's just that that's kind of historically, it was there, and nobody ever said, "Well, you better change it."
Gotcha.
And I think that's also because, as we've discussed before, there's confusion between those two words put together based on the context. And in fact, if it's that confusing and based on the context, it probably shouldn't be entitled, maybe, because people don't know what it means, but...
Yes, thank you.
I would think that we would not mess around with the regional title, but would make sure that our, our township titles or designations actually say what we intend them to.
Well, they do in our designations, and in the report, there is, in Chapter Three, the two paragraphs, which I had them add, which was very specific in terms of trying to explain that Patton Township has a different definition. But certainly, it's very, very clear in Patton Township what, what those definitions mean.
Well, for example, what I'm thinking is, maybe the Planning Commission can work on this. The map, the map that everyone uses showing our different zones and things like that would be helpful to demarcate what the different parcels are, so that you could look at it on a map. Is this this one, or is this that one?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think the mapping does show that, Elliot, although it may not be as clear as it could be.
Well, maybe it's my bad eyesight.
Well, I think the maps are very small, too, sometimes. Because our mapping does show that. But I think then that becomes kind of, I don't, I don't know that anyone, the only other steering committee member that had anything to say about that was the member from Half Moon, because in Half Moon Township, they don't have dedicated tax mileage for parkland purchase or development, but they do have tax mileage, I believe, for open space, which they kept as preserved land. But they, nobody else seemed very bothered about the actual title at a regional level.
So where we need to go from, and did you have anything to say?
No, I would, this is very helpful. That's all I need to say. Looking forward to sitting with my colleagues to just review and be ready for our deadline.
Which brings me, oh, thank you for that, public comments? Okay. Thank you for that, I need to...
Anita T., 761 Cornwall. I wanted to speak in support of the top priority that you identified on maintenance. Speaking as someone who walks almost daily in Circleville Park with my dog, we pick up, but, and my husband and I donated a bench there, and when they were installing it, the park district person, and I forget his name, I should remember it, but was talking about his philosophy of management of Circleville, that when he came on board, he instructed that not every area be mowed, so that natural growing could take place. And if you look at the park, they have now more areas that are not totally green grass, and I think that's a philosophy decision that probably the township should have some input on, especially as you want to increase the natural areas and for birds and wildlife and things like that. I mean, I was pleased that that was his decision, but it was one man, not just one man's, but, you know, he instituted it. I would presume, too, that that requires less cost for the person who's going around mowing the grass. And so I think the fact of, one other point, when it got really icy, and thank goodness, we haven't had much of that, I walk our dog at Two Deck, because they salt their bike path, for better or worse. And I encountered people from Lamont who drove on over, because that was the open, the word gets around, where can you walk your dog when it's really icy? Not that I think Patton should be salting its bike path, but that's kind of a decision on different parks, and I think that kind of decision is a maintenance decision. And I would hope that Township would have, you know, influence with the park district on what is happening there. So thank you for making that the top priority.
Thank you. Watch, you dropped something. There's somebody, Jim. Okay. Thank you. Yes, so we've had, sorry about that. I get engrossed in the topic of conversation.
Do we need to put that on the agenda to make a decision?
Yeah, so this will be on the agenda again.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, the next, the next day, or the next meeting would be the 11th.
Correct.
And so we'll come back with the recommendations from the RAC Committee, RAC, and with a more thorough reading of this, with the advantage of having those priorities from RAC.
Yeah, it, the plan really, because if you look at Chapter Seven, it goes on and on and on of recommendations. There are literally one hundred and thirty-three recommendations that Parks and Rec is supposed to start next year. Obviously, they can't do that. So providing direction to them, and that's where the RAC has started that, is good, but that's really the comments that need to go back, so that this plan can really, the next step of this plan can really be something that's implementable.
Right. I mean, the comments to the general forum, is what you mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's key.
Yeah, so those keys, you know, whether it's endorsement of the RAC comments, or the RAC comments plus your own, we need to finish that up on the 11th, so...
Yeah, and I don't know the other general forum members, what their, how they will comment, I mean, because it could be...
Ferguson Township spent an hour and twenty minutes talking about it last week.
Well, that I can believe.
Well, hopefully, they're all going to be very specific, because it allows...
I don't know if we need that much, but...
Well, it actually allows, whatever it is, it allows, if it's specific recommendations, that there can be a conversation, and then it can allow some parts of the plan to move forward for the highest ranking items for each municipality. And that's really what the report is for.
Yeah, but I, you know, your comments are going to shape what comes out, really what happens out of this plan.
Yes, so it's important to make comments that really matter to our residents.
You won't be here on the 11th, okay. So just give any comments to Doug, I guess, or me, if you have any comments about the plan. Wow. Yeah, it is, I think the bottom line is, we need to make some tough decisions, because we need to start.
Well, I think you can maybe not read the survey first.
Oh, okay.
Because the survey take is probably one-third of the document, so you can maybe take that off the back end of the document, so it'll look a little bit thinner, and then it might, it might be a bit more men...
Right.
Because the doc, all the survey information is summarized within the document.
Right.
So it's not like you have to read every single thing from the survey summary, because the items that are most important are nested within the text of the...
Yeah, but I do think that having this overstructure with, which to read this is going to make a huge difference, for me, anyway. Please express that to the RAC, incredible. Okay, any, anything else, any more comments? So we'll come back the next meeting and have a little more discussion. Yeah, great, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And kudos to, to the RAC. So we are now at the public safety, and I believe that takes us to the chief and the annual report.
Yes, and before I start the annual report, unfortunately, I have some sad news to report. On February 17, retired Sergeant Robert Leonard passed away. He started with our agency in 1979 and served the residents of Patton Township until 2011, when he retired, so for thirty-two years. Very well-respected member of our agency, battled lung cancer for a couple of years and unfortunately passed on Monday. We had a really nice procession for him up to the memorial park, where he was laid to rest on Monday, so I just wanted to mention that to the board.
Thank you, yeah, you did mention it. Thank you for that. Thank you for that, yes.
Yep. So 2019 was another great year for the Patent Township Police Department. First of all, I, we spoke last meeting, and I offered, gave Brian Schaefer the lifesaving award for the incident through a mod, so that was a really, a great show of cooperation that we had with law enforcement here in Center County. We're really, really blessed to have that. 2019, we ended our, our year with 19 officers, 19 officers in the department and two secretaries. Our staff consisted of myself, three sergeants, three detectives, and then 12 patrol officers. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights through this, it's a rather thick document, so in 2019, again, one of our detective's primary duties is drug enforcement exclusively. He works with the Office of Attorney General, the Bureau of Narcotics Investigation, our great tech guy right down behind our building here. He's also a member of the Center County Drug Task Force and a coordinator with the task force for the officers that we have for the drug task force. But that detective arrested six individuals, brought in additional seven cases on individuals selling drugs. I believe all those have been arrested now, so we have 13 arrests total from cases from 2019. We saw the pendulum swing from heroin to methamphetamine. It's kind of the largest drug that we're seeing in this region. Unfortunately, heroin still is around, it's not gone, but methamphetamine, definitely we're seeing a lot more of that. Unfortunately, Patent Township did have two drug-related overdose deaths in December of 2019. One was a 30-year-old female and one was a 29-year-old female. One was from fentanyl and the other was from methamphetamine. And those cases are still under investigation at this point. We do still carry the naloxone or Narcan. We did use it twice in 2019. One was successful, while we were able to revive the person experiencing the overdose, and the other one was, was not. As part of the, the drug detective's work, though, with the task force, again, that's countywide, he's really working with the state police a lot now. They have a new unit that they just started, so a really aggressive enforcement unit for drugs. They cover the whole troop area, though, so we're talking the whole way down to Bedford. They're, every once in a while, they're in our area and work really well with us. But task, task force-wide, we opened up 48 drug cases on individuals tracking substances in Patent Township. We're seeing a lot coming from Philadelphia area, area, and then also Williamsport's still a pipeline coming down from State College. But as a result of their investigations, they seized $135,000 in drug money from, from those 48 cases, so pretty good drug seizures that were, occurred in 2019. Main focus, obviously, the department, and Dr. Buckland acknowledged this in her letter, is our training. We try to continue to provide top-notch training to our officers, and I mentioned a lot of them in the, in the letter here, I'll just, just kind of tell you a few. We have mandatory training that our officers are finishing up right now, every year that MoPEC, the Police Officers Training Commission mandates that we take. But then we also do CPR, AED, firemen's training, crisis negotiator, cultural diversity, active shooter, and then collusion reconstruction training. My two guys are retiring, coming up here, are putting me in a bind, because they're both our accident reconstructions. And that's very intensive, about a month and a half worth of training. So we just started two of our young officers into that training process to, to help out when they, when they do go here. Some of the regional activities we participate in are the Center County Alcohol Task Force, again, I mentioned the Drug Task Force, and then also the Citizens Police Academy, which I highly encourage anybody, if you get an opportunity to do that, to participate in that. And we'll bring the dates when it comes back around to let you know. We got some grant money from the state for traffic details. We have buckle up and smooth operator, which focuses on aggressive driving. We did a total of five details, typically they're three weeks or so in length in 2019, and wrote 134 citations. We do still carry our tasers, and I'm happy to report in 2019, we had no dividends, so we didn't have to use them at all. We do still have Officer Brian Schaefer, who is our drug recognition expert. In the document here, you'll notice that his evaluations went down from 30 in 2018 to 2016. Reason for that is that we have three more officers that are trained to do it. So, so we have a little bit more of a pool to pick from when it comes to, to evaluating folks that are impaired, but he's still very active with that. Again, the department really tries our best to be visible in the schools, interacting with the students, the staff, helping out with traffic. Our two crossing guards at Regard Center, they absolutely are great in the mornings, helping in the afternoons, getting the kids across safely. So we really appreciate the efforts of, of our part-time crossing guards. We do still have Officer Brad Tuskovich, who is our part-time school resource officer, so he's still spending about four hours a day. Majority of his time is in the middle school, however, he does split up and go to the middle schools and make business to, to make an appearance there, but also handles any incidents that they have in, in the schools. Our other officers are very active in, in doing walkthroughs, though, in the schools as well. The other half of Officer Tuskovich's time is crime prevention and community relations. He is very active right now in planning the safety fair, so we're already starting to, to make all the arrangements for that, lining up all the different departments and the different things that we have at that, and we're very excited, May 16th, in the target parking lot again. So everybody's more than welcome to attend, and we're looking forward to a very successful event. And from 2019, our safety fair was held on May 11th. I personally think it was the biggest and most well-attended event that we've had in the 18 years that we've been doing it, so it was a huge, huge success, and we really appreciate the, the working relationship we have with the PTBA, the Business Association, David Panko, you know, the relationship we have with them. He brought it up today, actually, at the, at the meeting, that you really don't see community groups and police interacting the way we do. He said that many times he's gone to different places and talked about our safety fair, and you do that with the police, with the police. So, so we have a great working relationship with, with them and continue down that path, obviously. Some of the other community events that we participate in is the Ferguson Township Police have a bike rodeo, typically in the Weiss parking lot. We do the law enforcement torch run, which is for Special Olympics. We love that, love participating in that. Again, Officer Brian Schaefer gets to run it up the mountain out here, so he's the only volunteer we can typically get to do that, so. It's a, it's a difficult leg of the, the journey, but it starts in Pittsburgh, at PNC Park, ends up here, going on the campus into Lebron Field, so it's a great event, we love participating in that. And then the Center County Law Enforcement Memorial, I highly encourage, if you've never seen it, this year's going to be on May 13th, and it's typically at the, the Center County Courthouse on the courthouse steps. But if you've never seen it or been able to participate in it, it's, it's a fantastic event. Really well done. We have, we still have our drug take-back box that's up in the lobby of, of the municipal building here. We saw an increase in unused and unwanted medications. 2018, we collected 225 pounds, and in 2019, we collected 268. So we saw a few more of those coming, but obviously, the public's always welcome to come in, it's right in the lobby, walk in, it's like a mailbox, just open it up and you can put everything in. We do have some information on the website about the dos and don'ts and what we do accept with that. We did hire a part-time ordinance enforcement officer, he's been doing a fantastic job, aggressively enforcing the ordinances here in the township. And 2019 was our first full year with the body cameras, and it's been a very successful program, helping the officers write very accurate reports, they can go back and review exactly what was said or exactly what was done, and then also using those as evidence to assist in prosecutions in cases. We did see an increase of about 450 calls for service. The largest category was the request for assistance, so keys locked in vehicles, just, you know, attempting to locate people, civil disputes, things of that nature. Like I said, that was the, the main category that we saw. Accidents, we had nine more accidents, so we were very close, 379 from, up from 370 in 2018. Our serious accidents decreased by about 10. Bike stats, I have in there, the bike patrol guys did a fantastic job, we rode more miles this year, did some criminal arrests, handled more incidents, so they were very aggressive and did a great, great job in 2019. Couldn't be prouder of the department, they're continuing to do a fantastic job, very diligent service to the community, they provide, you know, courteous, professional, respectful service every day, and like I said, couldn't be prouder of, of everything we did in 2019 and moving on in 2020, so.
I'll echo that pride. And I did want to say, I apologize when you mentioned of the passing of, is it Sergeant Reynolds?
Leonard.
Leonard. I think I'd seen that somewhere, and then I was a bit surprised. I wanted to express, on behalf of the board, our condolences to the family, and I really apologize for that lapse of, whatever, thought. So it's really very sad to hear that. Thank you for laying that news to us.
Let me just find out, we are hiring, the department has one spot to fill, and we're going to create a hiring list, because we probably have a couple more spots through retirements here coming up. So no prior experience is necessary. Go to our website or call the township, and information's available about the process, and we welcome everyone to apply.
Great. Are you familiar with the Community and Diversity Group that's based in Pennsylvania?
Yeah, yeah, we've been reaching out through them.
Perfect, because they often give us updates on...
Yeah, Tyler's been, he's been using every channel he can think of...
Great, thank you.
...to get the word out.
Try to push it out to two news sources daily, so it's, we're getting it out there the best we can.
Yeah, we, well, we, I'm a recipient of so many of these messages that go through Carol Iker, and it's really quite, quite helpful. Thanks. Chair? Any comments from the board on the...
Yes, I have a question. Chief, do we have a record of how many citizens participated in 2019 for the Citizens Police Academy?
I could get that for you. I did, I did speak at their graduation, and just from eyeballing it, I'd say there was probably about, maybe about 25 people, probably, so.
Great.
And that's about as big of a class as they want to have for certain activities that they do. They take them to an indoor range that we use, so there's certain activities that you can't have much more than that, and you wouldn't be able to get everybody through it, so.
Thank you.
But I'll, I'll make sure, again, I'll pass along the dates, it's a fantastic program. We host it here one of the nights, but we, you know, it's really an inside look at, at law enforcement here in Center County.
Thank you. Great. And I have one question, just in general, how are the officers reacting to the body cams?
There wasn't really a whole lot of pushback at all. I mean, they, they embraced them pretty much right away, and we've had some experiences with them now that they, first of all, it's like any new piece of equipment...
It's new.
It's new, so it's different, it takes a little bit of time to get used to it. Now, it's, you know, they, they stick it on their, their chest, and off they go, and but they, they are, it's very positive.
Great.
Yep, they like them a lot.
It's not giving them too much recording work to do at the end of the day?
Nope, no, in fact, actually, it's very, they, their portion, portion of it, they check one out in the morning, like I said, they strap it to, on some of their uniform, at the end of the day, they come back and put it on a docking station, and that's pretty much the only involvement they have. Everything else is digitally, it just, you know, automatically gets uploaded to a server, so.
Great, thank you.
I think you mentioned to me that they, they find it helpful when they're writing their reports, they can go back and review the, the body cam tape.
Correct. Yeah, a lot of times, if, you know, frequently, we like to put verbatim or in quotes what somebody may have said or may not have said, and it's tough to do that even 10 minutes from driving back, and, you know, and trying to remember what that person said. For them to be able to sit and review it, they can verbatim exactly what that person said.
Especially in the heat of the moment.
Exactly, right, yep.
Thank you for that. Thank you, as always.
Yep, sure.
Great, any other comments? I guess that brings us to the next section, which is the, in public works now, the traffic signal application?
Yeah, I'll just, this is just a quick little update to know that staff is working on this. They're working with PennDOT on getting a, we need to get a permit from PennDOT, because it's quote-unquote a traffic signal. So they're doing that, we're working with, like I said, PennDOT and our, our traffic consultant are, are putting that together. At the same time, staff is also going out and getting quotes and bids on all the equipment, and we're moving forward. One little action item that is needed to make that application to PennDOT for the permit, there was a resolution, 2020-006, was included, basically just approved the application of that permit to PennDOT, and asked the board to take action on that tonight.
Yes, so I think I can ask for a move and second. Any discussion on that? Any comments from the public?
Let me just ask for an explanation of this drawing. How many, how many posts are we talking about here? One on every corner, there can be four posts?
Uh, no, I think there's two flashers, which are on this corner here, I'm going to say the upper right and the lower left, and then on the other two corners, there are pedestrian push buttons. So there, there'll be a push button at every corner, but the flashers are only on the, on the two corners.
The flashers are for the traffic on Toftrees.
Yeah.
That's what I...
And then everything talks to each other via radio signal, so there's no hard wire between them.
Oh, okay.
So which makes the installation a little bit easier.
How are they powered, then?
Solar.
Wow.
They're solar-powered?
Yep.
So they have a battery that stores enough energy, even when it's cloudy?
That part I don't know.
Yes, yes, so, so I think the, the flashers are going to be solar, the smaller pedestrians, because those, so the little, the little posts, there's going to be a little post on, on two of the corners that don't have the flash, so. And that's going to be powered by batteries, so that will be, yeah.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we'd have to have the post up so you keep the solar panel higher, so.
So those batteries on the short posts would have to be replaced.
Periodically, yes. We understand.
Five years?
Five years, yeah.
They last?
That's what they say. We're going to find out.
Yeah, right. So, so...
Those batteries.
So then, my understanding is a pedestrian would push a, a button, and both of the flashers would go off, so it's going to stop traffic in both directions? But the lights are positioned so that it...
It won't stop traffic, but it will, it will warn them.
It will warn traffic.
They're flashing them at the lights.
In both directions, correct, yes.
Yeah, great.
So, I mean, currently, we do have, we did put the, your feet is signs up there in each direction. Fortunately, we're still working with the vendor, they're supposed to record data, and they're not recording right now, but they are, there are flashing the speed, so, you know, I don't have any data we can give you about what factors, and hopefully, anecdotally, it's working to some extent.
Well, it's nice to make some concrete progress on this, as it were. Concrete progress.
So we need, we do need a vote on this.
We do need a vote, and we have the motion, then, but we're voting actually on the...
Yeah, that resolution.
The resolution, okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Perfect, so the resolution passes, and we'll get information on the, the pricing?
Yeah, yeah, as, as needed, we'll come back, and we're probably, I'm going to say a couple of months out from getting it installed, there's at least a four-week, I think, yes, lead time to get the equipment and stuff, so we'll continue to work forward on that. Next item also actually involves Toftrees Avenue. Contacted by Verizon Wireless, I think last fall, we've been back and forth with them between me and the solicitor and their counsel. We've worked out a agreement, and they call it a master license agreement, it really is just a, it contains things that are already in our regulations, but their, Verizon would like to have it in this form, which we can work with. They are planning to, to install some small cell wireless communication facilities along Toftrees Avenue. We know that there is coverage issues in that area, especially on the eastern end of Toftrees. This would help that. If you're not familiar with what small cell facilities look like...
They're not very big.
No. But we have some already, I mean, currently have some in, in, in Patent Township. We have several that are on traffic signals and others that are masquerading as other things, but there's a little box on top, that's antenna, and if you look around, there's usually a white box down on the, down on the ground. usually a white box down on the, down on the ground. So we have, like I said, these two in Patton Township along Colonnade Boulevard. And then there's one in Marjory May Park on a flagpole. And then there's actually another one near the corner of Colonnade and Wall Road that's a standalone. It was supposed to be on a traffic signal, but with the Wall Road construction, it ended up being a standalone. So those are the types of facilities that we would be looking at. Verizon Wireless will, you know, they like, they would like to co-locate on something else, but if not, they'll, they'll plant their own pole. Our biggest issue then tends to be height. They want more height, we want not as much height. So, you know, we try to find, we found that 35 feet usually works for them and it's not too obtrusive to the community. So we'll work with them on each individual location, but this master agreement, master license agreement will kick off the process to have them actually start the design of what they want to put in. So with that, I'd ask the board to consider approval of that tonight.
Okay, so it's just for them to start the study and come back with a?
Yeah, they'll have to come back to the township and get an individual permit. And we'll, we'll manage that through the Public Works Department. But each, yeah, each in, each, each place they want to put one required a permit. If there's an issue that we in Verizon, staff in Verizon can't work out, as we did with the original Crown Castle, we'll come to the board at some point if need be.
I'm looking for a motion?
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
I think we got one from Ms. Rob.
Third.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Any further discussion on that? I think she first did.
Second and third.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Great, okay. Thank you for that. Refuse and recycling route change, Bray's Woods. Who's taking that?
That'd be me again. Yeah, Shelley Mado, who's our refuse and recycling coordinator for the Council of Governments, has been working with Advanced Disposal, who's our contractor for the regional refuse. And there's an imbalance between the number of homes they pick up on Fridays and Mondays. So they're scheduling this change to take place at the end of March. Move, I can't remember how many homes it is. But they're in that area right between where the Monday and the Friday collections, the boundary between those two, let me put it that way. So they are going to, they're starting to reach out. We've given them additional contacts for homeowners associations for these neighborhoods. And they'll be doing door hangers and other outreach. They're gonna make the change that last weekend in March. They will pick up on Friday, the 27th, and then turn around for those folks again and pick up their, their refuse on the 30th also. So if folks have questions, I'll send them to Shelley first at COG and her contact information's there.
Great.
You need any more information, we'll get it for you.
Great, thank you. So I see planning and zoning, there are no items, however, I would be remiss if I didn't read that the tree removal at Patton Crossing is about to start and the tree cutting should mobilize late next week, so I'm assuming that would be this week?
Yeah, yeah, we got the notice last week. I don't, I haven't seen anything out there yet, have.
So as a country of laws, we need to say goodbye to those trees?
As Mr. Cool said they would. The trees are gonna come down.
Okay, we've got?
Before we leave that topic?
Oh, please.
I just wanted to say that I talked with a couple of the residents on Wolf Lane, which is only accessed through the Patton Crossing land. And they were concerned about the cutting of the, the large trees that, that are really at the edge of the Patton Crossing property and, but Wolf Lane. I know from the master plan, that's supposed to be, I think, parking area, that, that section, that triangular section. So is there any possibility that the residents, those residents could request consideration of certain of those big trees not be on their, on their master plan for cutting, cutting down? Because that's gonna be a buffer anyway, that, that section.
Yeah, I, we'd have to look. I mean, if you can send me an email, I'll just forward it to the ownership for Patton Crossing. I mean, it's ultimately gonna be there.
Yeah, that would be fine, because the resident, the resident there told me he actually does work for one of the developers.
Yeah. I, you know, it, it's an area that may need grade, they need to grade for something or other. So, I don't know. I mean, we can ask the, I mean, all we can do at this point is ask the developer.
I understand. Yeah, we can't prevent them from doing it. But that, but the, what I remember of the plan, the buffer areas, they were gonna put plantings in anyway. And when I brought this question up before, they would try to preserve as much of the natural plants that are already there, even though they wouldn't meet?
Well, they gotta, you know, if it's, if it's being graded up or down.
I understand what you're saying. I know what you're saying. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for asking that. Okay, so we are now on to administration items. We've got several items there. And the first is the appointment for, to township authorities, boards and commissions. So I would like to announce that Mr. Abrams and I reviewed applicants for the ABC committees and we are happy to announce this week that we are recommending the appointment of Kelly Prescott to become a member of the Open Space Stewardship Committee, and that will be for a partial term expiring in 2021. And for the appointment of James Payne, Jim's Payne, who's here, for a full four-year term on planning commission. That would start, I believe, next week and ends in 2023. Any discussion?
Public Works, per staff will reach out to you tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
As long as the board takes action to, to vote and approve that.
I move we accept his appointments that are listed.
I'll send you a contact.
Any discussions? Any ideas, any cheering? Those in favor of the appointment of Kelly Prescott and Jim Payne?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, yes, opposed, none, so welcome. We're on to, oh, there we go, the census support resolution. And that is something that I brought up. I do have a kind of philosophical viewpoint about resolutions that they sometimes don't do more than take up a little paper and a little bit of time. But I felt that with this census support resolution, it was important to give it a little bit more time and emphasis. And it does, I don't have that in front of me, but it does have some sort of guidelines for how we can go forward. Thank you. I just didn't call it up. And one is to share the importance of the 2020 census with Patton Township residents. And I certainly think that Mr. Erickson has done that in spades every single meeting. I actually had one suggestion, not, not mentioned specifically in the resolution, but maybe even reaching out to some of our businesses in Patton Township. And I think, again, of Kish Bank with their digital sign, if we could have some sign on there, something very simple, census day, April 1st, file your form, you know, a way of celebrating, so. I've read over this. I don't know if anybody has any comments. Time is, is running short. I copied this from Ferguson.
Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
I'd like to move that we pass the resolution.
Great. Any discussion? Any edits, typos, anything we need to know about? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. So thank you for considering that. And, yeah, every little bit helps. I think it's an important process, very important. Okay, we've got the minutes before us. I think that's gonna be a simple process of moving.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. And the vouchers, voucher report?
I move acceptance of the voucher report.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, seeing none. Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're moving through the voucher support. Nothing on the consent agenda. And then we're on to the highlight of the night, the managers' report.
As Chief Jolly noted, we do mark the passing of Sergeant Robert Leonard. He was a 32-year veteran of the department, was a fixture on the overnight shift for many, many years. Census day is April 1. Forms will come out probably within the next three weeks. So you'll first get a letter from the Census Bureau. They'll give you options for responding. You can respond online, by phone or by mail, and that'll start the process. Probably, they're hoping that many people respond online. Hopefully, the system's ready for it. Just to note that I, I was invited to the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors last week and gave them a presentation on our open space acquisition program from 2001 up to the present. Also, I noted that as part of our electric vehicle charger system, we actually tapped into the power system for the fire department. So we have a memorandum of, of understanding with them that we will reimburse them for those, for those power costs. And that's been signed by Mr. Steph and I. Again, winter's not over, so remember that if it snows more than two inches, get your car off the road. And if it does snow or ice or whatever, you need to shovel your sidewalk, treat your sidewalk in some manner to make it safe to work, to walk on. And our ordinance enforcement officer is going around after snows and making sure that sidewalks are safe for people to walk, kids and residents to walk on. That office will be closed. Upcoming events, we're closed on April 10th for carpet cleaning, coincides with Good Friday. PML's league, regional league, regional meetings in Lewisburg on the 14th. If anybody wants to attend, let me know. We'll get you registered. As we said, PSAT is May 3rd through 6th. Pam, if you know what dates you're gonna be there, let me know. And we'll get you. Signing up's not hard. Getting hotel reservations is more difficult, so that's why I need to know what dates you need. And that's the rest of my report. You can read as you need to, so that's all I got.
So it brings us now to committee reports. And I will start with the executive committee.
We planned a meeting and then we held it.
Yes. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We're now with, oh, the transportation and land use. And I was the, the alternate there, but I note on this that, Doug, you need to change it from Abrams to Rob. And you?
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Then, to make matters more confusing, I was the alternate for Payne. Okay. So I'm reporting on that as quickly as I can, but it was, and I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability. The main topic of discussion was the state and federal funding for transportation projects, which is projected to decrease. So any of the long-range transportation planning needs to fit within the budget as projected by the planning, I believe it's Center Region Planning Agency. Projections are not perfect. There's concern that because the funding has gone down and yet population continues to rise, should the, should the planning commission be directed to, when they're looking at those projections, be a little conservative in saying that they are in fact looking like there's a downward trend? Or should they be essentially hopeful and proactive and leaning more on the perceived needs of what this area might need rather than, and, let's see, rather than what funding is available for it? So I will say that after a lengthy, lengthy discussion, the committee voted to recommend the conservative approach, but to lobby legislators for increased funding at the state level, and I'm assuming also at the federal. And I'd say, look what happened with I-80. We were just about ready to pay for that ourselves and I guess we got some mana from the federal government. And then in addition, have projects always at the ready. And again, I-80 was a perfect example, though money might not be officially, even in the long-range plan for that, but that, they can start those at the, at the drop of a shovel, whatever. And then also interesting, but didn't generate as much discussion, was the airport updates, that between 2017 and 2019, there's been a 26% increase in passengers served. The driving force behind that is the security upgrade. Anybody who's traveled has seen that. I traveled for the first time in January to Minnesota. That's the only time I've been to Minnesota, but I was very impressed with the security. And then they are also in 2020 adding a, an aircraft rescue and firefighting station. And we'll be doing, doing some increases in snow removal, or upgrades in snow removal equipment. So, yeah, things are moving along with the airport. And they, we did request that we not wait another six years for another update, so I hope to hear from them again next year. We are now on to the ad hoc facilities.
No, those are all future meetings. The ad hoc facility meeting will be next Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, it's coming up, yeah.
And Mr. Manager, just for your, the solar power purchase agreement working group will be March 4.
Thank you for that.
Okay, are they gonna have the agreement done five minutes?
They sent us the agreement. I believe I forwarded it to you and the solicitor. And it does not have a cap on the amount, but I'm sure we'll be discussing it in the next meeting.
Okay, well, that'll be on the next agenda too.
It won't be finalized. We'll probably be ready to put it on next meeting's agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
On that, it's important to get that done because that's the only day of the year that's actually a command, March 4th.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure we get it done by May.
Thank you. So it looks like all of these other committees, they're in the future or some, and again, down on item E, change from Abrams to Pam, Rob. I'll remain as the alternate on that.
Well, I can be alternate if you want.
Either way.
It's up to you.
We'll fight over it, okay.
No problem.
So, any other business?
Yes.
Second?
Wait. Oh, do you have some other business?
I would just like to thank COG for setting up a meeting with the Alpha Firehouse. Newly elected and appointed officials did a tour today and it was outstanding. I can't tell you how educational it was for all of us. So I would like to thank the unsung heroes of the volunteer fire departments across the board, but especially those down at the Alpha Firehouse. For example, I would like to thank the fire director, Steve, who gave an outstanding presentation for us. And for Carolyn is the office manager, Jason the fire chief, Dennis, the assistant chief training, Rusty, the assistant chief field service, Rob is the equipment tech, and Sean, the emergency management coordinator. And to all the volunteers, fire men and women, we would like to say thank you. So if any of my colleagues haven't done the tour, please take the time. Thank you.
I can't wait. I can't wait, I think we'd have to wait for the next two-year training, I missed it today.
No, you don't have to wait.
Oh, that's true, I think I do have a standing invitation to go.
You have a standing invitation.
Yeah, thank you so much for that, nice recognition. Any other, any other new business? Any other, other business? Then we did have a motion on the floor, I think we've had a second, and aye, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.